Good evening and welcome. I call the order to Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, September the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P. M. Board Meeting Room Thirty-nine Bank Street Southeast, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. Kazee, roll call, please.
Ms. Eames.
Present.
Mr. Ingram.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Present.
Mr. Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
And Mr. Warren is joining us by phone.
Yes, I'm calling in from one eight-five, South Hill Lane, Danville, Virginia, two four five four zero, due to illness.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Ms. Kazee. Would you all join me in a moment of silence and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you all. Moving to item five. Any items to be added to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hunt. Moving to item six. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley, or second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Eames, or any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Warren, may I have your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, thank you all. Moving to item six. Got the approval of the agenda, seven, our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Eames, any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Warren, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving to item eight, presentations. I'd like all the board members to meet us up front and also, Mr. Adams, would you meet us also with Mr. Dodson for the presentation? Thank you. Get it out of the way and let us all get together.
Mr. Dudley.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the invitation, members of the board. I very much appreciate this opportunity to commend Bert Dodson for his work on the Commonwealth Transportation Board. As everybody in this room knows, that for any major transportation project, you can't do it in Virginia without a willing and able partner on the C. T. B. And so, it's a great privilege to be here with you, Mr. Dodson, and again, I thank the chairman and the members of the board for allowing me this occasion to present this to you. This is the resolution of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Whereas, Bert Dodson served as a member of the Commonwealth Transportation Board, representing the Lynchburg District, which includes Pennsylvania County, from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three, having been appointed by Governor Ralph Northam in two thousand eighteen to fill an unexpiar term and subsequently reappointed for a full four-year term by Governor Northam in two thousand nineteen. And whereas Dodson has diligently and tirelessly worked as a tremendous advocate for the county and the region's economic development efforts, and whereas he was instrumental in securing seventy-one million dollars in new road funding for the Southern Virginia Megasite, including thirty-three million for the new two-point-two-mile connector road, and thirty-eight million for widening extension U. S. Route Three-eleven from two lanes to four lanes, with median separation from the intersection of the connector road to Oak Hill Road. And whereas Mr. Dodson also led the approval process for Stan River Plastics LLC's Industrial Rail Enhancement Grant, which paid seventy percent of the cost required to reconstruct an existing rail siding and switch at the Southern Virginia Multimodal Park in Hurt, Virginia, and he has given unselfishly of his time and efforts for the county's betterment, and as a result, thousands of jobs will be associated with and due to his efforts with the anticipated cumulative impacts of the Megasite and the multimodal park. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board expressed their sincere appreciation to Dodson for his noble dedication of his time and efforts towards the development and advancement of the county and the region, and be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be presented, Mr. Dodson, on behalf of the board.
Oh, real quick, I really enjoyed those five years. My good friend Ben Davenport was very instrumental in me getting that appointment. I've told a number of people, it was the best non-paying job I ever had in my life. But I know it's a big project, as far as money's concerned, we got local money and state money. And when you go, I can say this now since I'm no longer appointed, when you fight those Northern Virginians for money, you better have your claws out, because they want all the money. But I would say there's gonna be a great project in the future, many jobs will come to Pennsylvania County, and since my great-grandfather left Pennsylvania County in eighteen-seventy and came up to Campbell County, I feel like I'm part of Pennsylvania County, because I know there's a lot of Dodsons in the county. Bottom line, thank you, and very kind, being a local elected official for twelve years in Lynchburg, I know y'all have served a great expense to yourself sometimes and to your families, and appreciate local elected officials. These General Assembly guys, they got all the money, right? I just thought, yeah. And thank you for being too, okay? They don't, especially being from University of Richmond and being House of Delica member. I know you have a lot of fun with the Northern Virginians too, don't you? Okay, I won't get you in trouble now. God bless y'all, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. He's got more hair in his head, looks better. I'll just stay on the chair, don't matter what happens. Each person addressing the board under the hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the rested agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district and all the tone of voice for the records, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed through the board as a body, not any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last a maximum forty-five minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said session who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. Kazee, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir, Patty Graves.
All right, Ms. Graves. Welcome.
I'm Patricia Graves. I live on eleven-hundred Milton Highway, Highway sixty-two. I'm here to talk about Blue Ridge Rock Festival. I'm sure all of y'all have heard about it, it's been in the news, it's been in the paper, it's been everywhere that you go, you hear something about it. But I live out there on sixty-two where most of the traffic came by our home. And it started when I got up one morning, on Wednesday morning, about six-thirty, I looked out the window and it was already lined up in front of my driveway. It lasted that night till about eleven-thirty. People started getting out of their cars, walking around in people's yards, they were driving in my driveway, turning around, going out the opposite way. We have neighbors that, one lady beside of me has a newborn baby, and she, her husband works out of town. So, you know, all of this was going on, you know, during the middle of the night, children had to go to school the next day, people to work, and here we were. We were there in prison on Highway sixty-two, which my husband and I call it Interstate sixty-two. We need something done about this, because it looks like the traffic now is just, just getting horrendous out our way. I don't know how this came about in Pennsylvania County, I don't know how it was even approved, that most of the traffic came by our way. But we do know, we have found out from the Sheriff's Department, we've read an article in the paper from Halifax County, that the tickets were oversold. So we have learned more about it as the time went by, and so we feel like, you know, we need to have something done about it. I want to know how this happened, you know, did any of, anybody let us know? We couldn't get out, the ambulance was going up and down the road constantly, too many times to count, and it was going in the opposite direction of the traffic. And let me remind you, it's a two-lane road. How, how could this happen? I don't understand it. I mean, this is something that, you know, I've been out there forty-seven years, this has been my home. I've lived there, I know just about everybody owned that road. I worked and retired at a local bank there. I just, I just can't get it together, my mind can't wrap around all of this, and I need some answers. Why this happened? I realize this was approved through Halifax County, I know how it was, how, how the protocol was, but I'm starting with you, ladies and gentlemen, you know, to find out some answers on this. I mean, we deserve better than this. We own land, we have farms out there. I know just about everybody on that road, I either went to school with them, they went to school with my kids. I mean, it's just, I, I mean, I, I'm just so disappointed in the way this has been handled. And I, and, you know, I know, something can be done and found out about this, and I just appreciate your help with it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Clark Graves.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We've been severely restricted in our, going in and out at our house, and there's been a lot of traffic, as Patty said, there's just, it's just overwhelming out there, and we know how it was at White Oak Mountain years ago, a couple of years ago, they, they had to move out of there because they were causing so much trouble, they're causing every bit as much trouble with us. And we'd like to see it no more out there, if possible. Thank you for the opportunity to speak concerning this Blue Ridge Rock Festival, so-called, there's nothing to do with the Blue Ridge, but the safety on the road is a big issue. There are people going both ways, at night and day. We, both North Carolina sixty-two and North Carolina one-nineteen, neither one of them are suitable for traffic of this nature. There were many and many trips made by area ambulances carrying people out. There were a lot of people that were overwhelmed with the heat, ninety-seven, ninety-eight degree heat, plus down in that bottom where V.I.R. is, there's not much air moving. Halifax County Sheriff Fred Clark said that several hundred people were seen by EMS at the scene for heat exhaustion, but he was not aware of anyone who'd required hospitalization. And also, Clark estimated there were at least fifty to sixty thousand people at the festival. Organizers had announced ticket sales of only forty-five thousand. There were also twelve to fifteen deputies who were required to provide security at the festival. And Sheriff Clark in Halifax County had to call in other people to back up his people that were missing. There was a mass strike between more than two hundred of the staff because of improper treatment, they weren't letting them take showers or get meals, and it was just poorly handled all the way around. The main thing that affected us, of course, is the traffic. Every vendor that was there was forced to use a pause system, a point-of-sale system, provided by the festival, and those all had fees that were never mentioned, an extra seven dollars every time. So they were really bleeding those people that were out there. Three meals a day were supposed to be provided for the help, which usually they weren't, and when they were, the portions were the size that you would give a small child. We were working ten hours plus per day building stages in the ninety-five-degree heat. That was from the Star Tribune, y'all probably read that this week.
Mr. Graves, you want to start winding down, your time.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Goes by quick, then.
It does.
All right, thank you for coming.
Anyway, I hope y'all got our message, and what we're, what we're looking for is no more.
Thank you for coming, sir.
As our neighbor says, no moss.
Welcome, Ms. Scares.
It's an honor and a privilege to be here. I miss speaking to the group the past two meetings because of letting the Agston folks have the floor, but my name is Vanessa Scares, and I do live in the Westover District. My heart is heavy regarding the condition of our county and our country. I remember when a man's handshake and his word meant something. Now, men and women sign oaths, do not keep them, and think very little of it. In the first G.O.P. national debate, the question was asked to the presidential candidates if they would honor their oath to support the candidate that received the nomination. The fact that the question was asked lets you know the total lack of integrity that exists. I truly do not understand how a candidate could receive one single vote if they started their campaign on a lie and did not honor their oath. But the fact is, people don't even care about the truth. But I have a dream, to live in a county where people say what they mean and mean what they say, to have people in leadership that let their yes be yes and their no be no. Jesus talked about that on the Sermon on the Mount. The overall point is that Christians should reflect a pattern of truth and integrity, and when a believer says yes or no, they should mean it with complete honesty. It would be great to return to simpler, less confusing times. You know, the enemy creates confusion just, just to distort the truth, and confusion divides, separates, and destroys. First Corinthians four, fourteen thirty-three reminds us that God is not the author of confusion but of peace, the devil is the author of confusion. I'm concerned about our country and our county being at a crossroads. No one takes it seriously, and most of the time it's not even taught in history class, that our country was founded on a covenant between God and our founding fathers, to be a beacon of liberty to all nations. When you have the time, I hope you'll look up Robert Hunt, he was the first chaplain at Jamestown. He made landfall in sixteen-oh-seven, built a wooden cross and planted in the sand, naming the place Cape Henry. Then he prayed a truly inspirational prayer. This is our history. First time I spoke to this body, I asked each member on the board to consider why they were on the board. Tonight, I ask that the candidates answer the same question. Is it because you were talked into running, or do you truly have a heart to serve all county residents? Are you planning to govern this county or play politics? Do you have a personal agenda, or are you ready to roll up your sleeves and work to make Pennsylvania County better for all citizens? It's time for self-reflection. I suggest that each candidate contact one or both of the two board members that have resigned since these questions were asked approximately one year ago. I'm sure that the conversations with those two men would be very eye-opening for the candidates, and help prepare you for the pressure of someone always trying to sway your boat. More advice to the candidates, use wisdom when you decide who to link arms with. They might just decide to end the confusion, obey the Lord, and go lay on the beach with their family. The best advice that I've heard was so eloquently offered by Sheriff Taylor at a recent fundraising event. He said, "If you're going to serve, you better have your spiritual life in order, and be prepared to answer the hard questions." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scares.
David Willis, Jr.
How you doing, sir?
Thank you. My name is David Willis, and I'm from the Tunstall District. And first of all, I'd like to apologize to everybody about some of my actions, the way I've acted here, got a little, things got to me a lot. And anyway, I'll just come at this time, because this R.P.D. thing is a very big deal, very, very big. It's, has, it's gonna do tremendous things, tremendous things to this county. And I'm asking the people to vote if yes, please, if you can, if there's any way possible, could you please recant your vote to save this county, to save this county from being whatever it's going to become? Because it's going to be something a lot different than Pennsylvania County. If we get this, if we get this Megasite going out there, and this Megasite, Megasite, and you see the money that's been spent at the roads already, and if we get this Megasite going, and they have two or three corporations or more that wants tens of thousands of jobs or something like that, then we're gonna have to provide housing for all of those, for all of those people. And this, this dense population is not the way to go, I don't believe. And if y'all stay with the yes vote, could y'all please, like, please, like, make it like twenty percent of the area to be the R.P.D. dense population like that? Because, and let the rest of it be like two houses per acre or something, where, where people can't just build big dense populations like that and overpopulate our county at one time? Because if we have three corporations coming into the Megasite or something like that with a lot of jobs in it, then we got supply of the housing. Then other people will be investors, will be coming up with land, and they want to make theirs R.P.D. too, and have that, and justify it by the need of housing. And then there we go with another R.P.D. place to justify the housing. So if we could make the R.P.D. codes or something where you could only have twenty percent density and not start a city with it too, other people couldn't come in and start, if we leave it like it is, other people will come in and start a dense population of area and the city at the same time. They wouldn't have to have necessarily come in like these people and start the population first. They, they could come in and start the population and the city at the same time, and if, get two or three of them going, and a few things on the Megasite, within ten years, we'll have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people in dense populated areas all in this county. This county will be densely populated. I don't know what else to say, but I beg y'all, please, if y'all can, to change those R.P.D. codes, do not allow them to go forward like they are, or recant your vote to say, no, I can't do that. I appreciate it, that's all I have to say, I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, David.
Ms. Kazee, somebody else?
Jones Kendrick. Jane, I'm sorry.
I don't have a prepared statement, but I will say this on behalf of our Tunstall Community Group. I was very proud of the group that we brought or that was able to come last month and the month before and the month before. A lot of people spoke out, and I will tell you that there is a great number of people that are not here tonight simply for the reason that they felt that they were not heard, and their voice did not count, and what they said didn't matter. And I don't think that is the intention of this Board of Supervisors. As public servants, that's what you're here to do, is to do what the people's will is. I went to a restaurant the other day. It was the craziest thing, so I go in there, and I think I'm going to be seated and have a really delicious meal. Instead, the server said, "Oh, go in the kitchen and fix my food and bring it to me the way I want it." And I was like, "Well, I thought I was like the customer here?" No. I said, "Well, that's kind of odd. I could have stayed home and done that." And so you see where this little fake story is going. When you go to a restaurant, you expect the server to bring the meal that you order to your table prepared the way that you would like it. And when the people come to you as representatives, they expect you to do what they ask you to do. And gone are the days when we just say, "This is the way it's going to be, and you have to like it." And I don't think that was the intention of everyone, but that was the message that was given by some on the board, and hence you have citizens who say, "It's not worth it to go over there, Jane. They send their tax checks in. They do the fundraisers. They show up. We live out in the part of the county where, you know, when the trees fall down across the road, we don't bother calling VDOT. Mike, David, he's here, a bunch of other guys, they just go out and move them out of the road, cut them, get the chainsaws. Someone slides in a ditch, they go pull them out. That's the community we live in. I felt for Mr. and Mrs. Graves talking about that debacle, that money-making, money-making, money-making. There's always a cost. And the RPD that this board approved last month, the development out in Axton, yes, it will be a fraction of that, but it will be a daily nightmare. So please consider later on this evening when you're voting on the next changes and in the future that the citizens do care, and they are watching, and they do expect servanthood. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Kazee. Moving to item ten, rezoning public hearings. Pursuit to Article five, Division six of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors has been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all citizens of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of the county's its citizens and its prosperity. Ms. Ragsdale?
Case R dash two-three dash zero-two-one, Kevin and Frances Reynolds have petitioned to rezone two-point-two-eight acres located on Covey Lane in the Callens-Gretner election district from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agricultural district to allow for the placement of a second dwelling on the property. On August first, twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. I believe Francis Reynolds is here to represent the petition, although I have not seen her.
Ms. Reynolds here?
Ms. Reynolds, are you present?
Maybe not. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
At seven-thirty-two, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up for this case? Ms. Kazee? All right. At seven-thirty-two, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay, Ms. Chair...
Go ahead, Mr. Dalton.
I'm sorry. Ms. Chairman, this is in Supervisor Dalton's district, and as he's the chairman, I'll go ahead and make this motion. In case R dash twenty-three oh twenty-one, make a motion approving the rezoning of two-point-two-eight acres from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agriculture district to allow for the second dwelling to be constructed on the property, and that is my motion.
Go ahead, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Not? We ready to vote?
Mr. Warren, may I have your vote?
Yes.
All right, is it popping down for y'all?
It's come down, but it won't let me vote, Harley.
Won't let you vote?
I don't see it coming down for me.
I've already got yours, Mr. Dalton.
You got mine, yes.
Mr. Dalton, what's your vote?
Yes.
And we got to include Mr. Warren as well, right?
I did.
Okay, very good.
Motion passes. Property is being rezoned. Thank you. Moving to case R twenty-three dash zero-two-two, Ms. Ragsdale?
Case R dash two-three dash zero-two-two, Larry Dalton has petitioned to rezone two-point-three-eight acres located on State Road seven thirteen Oak Grove Road in the Dan River election district from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agricultural district to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A-one. On August first, twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Larry Dalton is here to represent the petition.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dalton, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir? All right, thank you. All right, at seven-thirty-four, I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Kazee, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. At seven-thirty-four, I'll close the public hearing. All right, the pleasure is yours, Ms. Ings.
I make a motion, case R two-three dash zero-two-two, for Larry Dalton positioning to rezone from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agriculture district. I make a motion to approve that.
Motion, got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion? If not, we ready to vote?
Mr. Warren, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Property is being rezoned. Moving to case R dash twenty-three dash zero-two-three, Ms. Ragsdale?
Case R dash two-three dash zero-two-three, Willie Thompson has petitioned to rezone eleven-point-one-eight acres located on State Road seven forty-six Golf Club Road in the Chatham-Blair's election district from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agricultural district to allow the property to be subdivided for the construction of another single-family dwelling. On August first, twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I do not believe Mr. Willie Thompson is here as he is a hundred years old, so unless his daughter is here...
Is anyone here to represent Mr. Thompson?
I do not. I don't see her. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
All right. At seven-thirty-six, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Seven-thirty-seven, I'll close the public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dalton. I am going to take this and Mr. Warren's presence not being here. He is on the phone, Bob Warren. In case R dash twenty-three dash zero-two-three, I make a motion approving the rezoning of eleven-point-one-eight acres from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agricultural district to allow the property to be subdivided, and that is my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ingram. Any discussion? If not, we ready to vote?
Mr. Warren, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Property is being rezoned. Thank you. Moving to case R dash twenty-three dash zero-twenty-four, Ms. Ragsdale?
Case R dash two-three dash zero-two-four, David and Mary Ellen Wright have petitioned to rezone a total of twenty-point-seven-eight acres located on State Road eight forty-one Whispering Pines Road and State Road eight forty-eight Joe Carter Road in the Tunstall election district from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agricultural district to allow the property to be used for agricultural purposes. On August first, twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mary Ellen Wright is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Wright? Do you have anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you. All right. At seven-thirty-nine, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up, Ms. Kazee?
No, sir.
At seven-thirty-nine, I'll close the public hearing. The pleasure is yours, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. In case R twenty-three dash zero-two-four, I make a motion approving the rezoning of twenty-point-seven-eight acres from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agricultural district to allow the property to be used for agricultural purposes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we ready to vote?
Mr. Warren, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Property is being rezoned. Thank you. Each person addressing the board under the public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residence. For non-county citizens, in an all-in tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board affirmatively gives the extension to the speaker allotted time. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. Kazee, do we have anybody signed up? Just... I'm sorry, Warren. Ms. Vanderheide?
Good evening. Tonight's public hearing is being held to consider budget amendments in the amount of twenty-six million, four-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, four-fifty-one-twenty-two to the county's FY twenty-four county budget. This has been advertised in the Star Tribune for a week, and it has also been on the county's website, and so after tonight's public hearing, you all will be able to consider these amendments and vote on those tonight. And I'll answer any questions you may have before we open the public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Vanderheide? Not hearing any? Ms. Kazee?
May I?
I'll open the public hearing at seven-forty-one. No one has signed up? All right, at seven-forty-one, I'll close the public hearing. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll offer a motion to approve FY twenty-four budget amendments totaling twenty-six million, four-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, five, four-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and twenty-two cents, as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Second by Mr. Dudley. Any more discussion on the motion? If not, we ready to vote? Mr. Warren, I'm sorry. Did you have any comments?
I voted yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's not dropping down, or has it? Did you get it?
I've got yours, Mr. Dudley.
Okay.
Mr. Scares, what is your vote? Yes.
Everything good, Ms. Kazee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Still in progress. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving to item two, public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale, Pennsylvania County Code Amendments.
At last month's meeting, staff was instructed to go back and make additional changes to the RPD zoning district regulations, so those changes are in front of you. The changes that are being proposed are increasing the exterior setbacks for all RPD projects to a minimum of a hundred feet, unless that is reduced by the board through the approval of a conceptual plan. Additionally, that would require all projects to be able to connect to public water and sewer, again unless approved by the board through the rezoning process. The reason that staff gave the board the ability to do that is because we have some areas in the county that the comprehensive plan designates this kind of use as being very appropriate for, such as around Smith Mountain Lake, and those properties do not have any access to public water and sewer and may never have access to public water and sewer just based on topography and the location of our system. So we did not want to exclude the possibility, but they do not have the outright ability. That would be up to the board's discretion. Additionally, we added some language, increasing the minimum project area from five acres to twenty-five acres, and there's language that eliminates the ability to include wetlands in that thirty percent total gross area of open space. That's limited to no more than five percent of that thirty percent being wetlands. So all of that is in front of you in a redlined version. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Ragsdale? Mr. Scares?
I was just wondering, I know we did not add this to the changes to show that a traffic study must be done. I know we talked and you said it was in the state code, but a lot of times we codify what's in the state code in our local code, and I just wondered, can we do that later on down the road so there's no confusion like the Axton project where it took a while for the developers to figure out they had to do a traffic study?
Normally, we don't... Well, we can reference state code. The problem you run into when you start referencing another code that actually will supersede our codes is that if that code ever changes, then we have to follow suit and change it in our ordinance as well. So that's a requirement that we have to follow, and so there's no way around doing it. That's why staff did not add that language into our ordinance. We can. That is just the reason. We normally try to avoid that, to get into the situations where it gets changed in state code, and then we don't follow suit, and then we've got codes that don't match up. But that is something that we definitely can look at in the future if you all would like us to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Scares. Mr. Ingram?
Ms. Ragsdale, do you know how many years this ordinance has been on the books?
It was adopted in nineteen ninety-one.
Okay, so a long time.
Yes.
And over the course of the years from ninety-one till now, how many RPDs have we looked at?
I believe we have seven.
Okay.
Or five. Sorry, it's been a while since I looked at, and there's a whole lot that's been going on since then, so not many.
I was thinking it was three, then I heard five, but it's just a handful. So with the changes that we're looking at tonight, you're looking at the setbacks being basically a hundred feet all the way around. You're looking at the fact you went from five acres to twenty-five acres, because I got a lot of calls from people that said, "Hey, somebody owns five acres, they're going to build one of these cities." And to me, the most important aspect, or one of the most important... And to me, the most important aspect, or one of the most important, would be the fact that that area would have to be capable of connecting to public water and sewer. So in essence, that would eliminate eighty percent plus of any possibilities throughout this extremely large county. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the continued response that we're trying to build cities, is there anything valid about that statement?
What we are...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Just as clarity, Mr. Ingram made a statement that is, I think, pretty factual in reality, but it does leave open the door because of the Smith Mountain Lake that could not have to have public water and sewage access. So we don't want to put out there something that's not a hundred percent accurate to the public. Somebody could petition future boards, and they could be approved to do that without it. And there certainly should be an increase in RPDs if economic development takes place, especially out there in that Tunstall area. It just needs to be completely transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Ingram, do we have anything else?
I'm not sure what he said, to be honest with you. I couldn't hear him.
He was talking about the area like around Smith Mountain.
Yeah.
There could be some possibility of development there.
Sure.
Just to make sure we're clear with everybody.
No. It could be county-wide.
Well, yeah, that's right, but we were...
The board would have to approve it. Mr. Ingram made the statement that there couldn't be any without public water and public sewage. That is not accurate. That is only accurate in the event the board did not approve it, the setting board at the time. And there will be more RPDs. Don't be ridiculous to say there won't be because of the projects that are being looked at in our geographic area that's going to require housing. I've said this for six years, and I will continue to say it. We need the housing, but don't try to paint the picture to the people that it's not a thing that's needed and that's going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Yeah, I was going to also compliment Mr. Warren because it seems like he was, in fact, the architect with a lot of this. But when you look at the section thirty-five-three oh-six under utilities, it says, "All planned unit developments shall be served by publicly-owned water and sewer unless the requirement is waived by the Board of Supervisors during the rezoning process." So unless the sitting board waives it, that's the ordinance, period.
That is correct. That would... It would require a waiver from the board.
And so that's very factual and transparent, correct?
Yes, if the board does waive that requirement, yes. We do have a project at Smith Mountain Lake that does have publicly-owned sewer. And the only reason that they were able to get publicly-owned sewer is because they have community drain fields that they constructed and then turned over to the county for maintenance, and then they pay fees just like any other customer would. That type of situation would be something that staff may feel appropriate for the board to waive that requirement for.
But the statement was made that they couldn't do it without having municipal water and sewage, and that is not an accurate statement as a whole. I do agree with you, Mr. Ingram. I think that would almost be impossible. However, we want to be clear to the public that that possibility exists, that a different setting board could allow an RPD to occur when we didn't have public water and sewage. That's all I will say.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any more questions? Comments? Any questions for Ms. Ragsdale?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to add one more thing. I think that the spirit of these changes was to convey to the public that we had listened, we had made proper concessions to this ordinance to where it would be more acceptable by some of the citizens, as well as a potential future developer. But to think that there are millionaires standing around every tree waiting to build a development, that is simply not the case because from ninety-one to now, we've only looked at, according to your number, seven, and that's not very many.
I think it was five.
Yeah, okay.
Don't quote me on that.
Let's go back to five, because I've been telling people three, and then you and I talked, and then it was five. But point being is, we would like to see more people develop. But unless you have somebody with the assets, the money, the ability, the desire, it's not going to happen. So our county, being the largest in Virginia land-wise, will not be flooded with a whole bunch of RPDs. And that's a hard fact.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any more questions? Mr. Scares?
I'd just like to make a comment. I know there's probably at least five parcels of land in my district alone that would qualify even with these changes. So to say that none are coming kind of begs a question. Consequences happen with elections, so it will depend on the new board, on where these kind of projects go. So I hope people choose wisely because some people don't listen to the citizens like others. And it was proved by this. If the citizens hadn't stood up against this project, the changes would have never happened. And it's just like the changes that are being made now. If this comes to another place in the county, the people can stand up and make the same noise and probably get more changes. So it is important that the citizens come forward and let us know what they're feeling. Some of us will listen, some will not. Again, elections have consequences.
Thank you, Scares. Any more questions, Ms. Ragsdale?
I don't think so.
All right. If not, at seven-fifty-four, I open the public hearing. Ms. Kazee, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Erica Spina? Spina, sorry.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening. At this stage of the Pennsylvania County Code Amendment process, I take issue with the verbiage used throughout the amendments. Firstly, I have a problem with the addition of clubs, both private and public. The types of clubs must be listed more specifically. Are these quilting clubs, strip clubs, dance clubs, or 4-H clubs? The terminology is far too vague. It must be listed specifically to maintain our wholesome way of life here in Pennsylvania County. My next problem is similar in nature and refers to the retail grocery stores, hotels, and other similar uses. For the protection of the citizens, other similar uses must be defined. For the sake of time, I will combine this issue as one, including front, side, rear setbacks, and corner lots. This is a recurring phrase throughout all of these paragraphs, unless reduced by the Board of Supervisors. So as a voting Pennsylvania County taxpayer, do you know what that says to me? This says, "We're not really giving the citizens any definite setbacks or rules at all. It's for this singular project in Axton, and future projects have no set limitations. It is extremely patronizing, condescending, and quite honestly insulting to my intelligence. This wording must be removed for finite parameters. There are minimums and maximums for a reason. When we drive down Mount Cross, we are all well aware the speed limit varies up and down and can go from fifty-five to a twenty-five. It doesn't say twenty-five unless approved by the state trooper who's about to pull you over. It's twenty-five for the safety and well-being of all, whether you, the driver, like it or not. If we, the citizens of Pennsylvania County, need finite rules to adhere to, you best be sure outsiders just looking to make a buck off of us should be expected to as well. At the last meeting, we were assured any RPD must have public water and sewer. And then what do we read? Unless approved by the Board of Supervisors. Now, it's been rumored that it only applies to Smith Mountain Lake. And if so, that's fine. But the wording needs to reflect that. I'm sure, growing up, we all heard from our parents, "My house, my rules. This great county is our home, and our rules need to apply. We are giving away the keys to our castle in the name of growth. Look around this country. We don't want what they have. We are special. And once we sell out, all of the wood-a-cutter-shooters won't change a thing. Some have labeled our group as anti-growth. We are not anti-growth. Growth is unavoidable. We grow, our families grow, and no matter how hard we fight it, our children grow too. Growth is a part of life. And we are for growth in this area. Spiritual growth, educational growth, the growth of our plants, animals, and trees, the growth of families and farmers and agriculture, growth of financial prosperity. We are not anti-change. It's easy to be against things. We are for preservation, pro-God, pro-America, pro-family, pro-morals and values, pro-farmer, pro-blue-and-white-collar workers, and this pro-standing-up-for-what-you-believe-in."
Ma'am?
Yes.
You need to start winding down.
And pro-country-living. So if that makes me anti-growth, I can live with that.
Welcome, Mr. Willis.
Thank you, thank you. My name is David Willis from Tunstall District. I'd just like to reiterate everything she just said just a minute ago. It's all the truth. And the thing about the similar in the codes, I feel that should be gone, too. Everybody feels that should be gone. Like she said, it needs to be addressed what it is, not just whoever, whatever they want to do later on down the road. We'll ask and we get. But anyway, like Mr. Ingram was talking about a minute ago, and everybody was talking about the five RPD, the five RPDs before on Smith Mountain Lake and everything like that. The only reason we only had five before is because of the laws we have in place, the bylaws, RPD codes, everything. And that's why we only have five. But now, we have this mega site, and we're trying to fill up this mega site. So now, we're trying to bring industry in here and the people with it. But how much industry do we want here? You know, how many people do we want here? And by allowing this right here for large-scale density like this, it'll allow them to have an excuse to bring in all kinds of different corporations with tens of thousands of people every time. And then we have to fill those houses. And then we have more and more dense places like this. And like I asked before, if anything goes through with this, please allow the dense part to be like a percentage of the area, like twenty percent or something like that, and not allow them to build a city along at the same time because they can achieve what they want with the codes that we have now. Those investors can achieve that. They can build those houses according to the codes and maybe ask for so many acres to be dense and then come back and ask for a commercial because they're asking for the commercial later anyway. They said they're going to build the dense population and then the city. So they can do that by the laws we have now, is what I'm saying. Anyway, and the five, like say, we have five now, and if we allow these RPD codes to go through, and people are looking at those mega sites, and they're looking at land here to build, to bring the people here with, then they're going to be looking for land, too. Their big investors are looking at land, too, so they can build these RPD places to house their thousands of people that they want to bring here for, to go on the mega site. So just please don't allow them to do that. Please, please, please. I'm just begging you all, just please reconsider this RPD thing, please, and take it very seriously to this county. This county does not need it. This county does not need hundreds of thousands more people in the next ten years. And this... And the mega site turn into a real big mega site. Change its place. It'll turn this county into something like Michigan or Milwaukee or something. Just industry. Our place will be nothing but industry and housing. And we don't want industry and housing. We like our county. Everyone here in this county loves it. And last time, I'm sorry, I'll make this quick, but before the codes were changed, and within three weeks' time, between me and three other people, they come up with five hun... Come up with three hundred signatures against, you know, saying they didn't want that. And then after that meeting, then before the next meeting, within three days, another two-hundred-and-eighty-five people signed those within three days, saying they didn't want it. So if we could have more time, we could have thousands. But I wish y'all could reconsider this and reconsider a decision or something. If you can or something, please don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Ms. Kazee?
Josh Austin.
Welcome, Mr. Austin. Thank you, sir. Thank the board. Josh Austin, Tunstall District. I'm going to go back to a statement that's here in number ten under item A on the rezoning of public hearings. There's a statement in here that says, "The board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County and its citizens and its posterity." So that being said, with the statements that have now been included in the RPD amendments that was brought up last month, we're allowing our future just to be thrown out there. We don't know what's coming. So what this group is fault for and what future groups will fight for, we're just going to say, unless the board waives it. If you're setting a code, you set a code for a reason. So you want to provide safety and security to your citizens. By providing the hundred-foot buffers, you're setting that safety and security. By limiting these places where they can go, you're setting the safety and security. So if we allow somebody to come in and just say, "Well, we don't like this. Can we change it?" And not necessarily this board, but two boards in the future. Are we providing that safety and security for those citizens at that time? I don't think so. So please reconsider the "unless the board waives it" statement in there. Let's make it a little bit more concrete. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jane Kendrick.
I'm sorry. Was it neither?
Welcome, Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you, Mr. Dawn. Don't tell my former students. Good evening again. I do have a problem with these RPD revisions to the revisions. So as Erica said, language is important. If I were grading this, I would say, "Be more specific." And I don't like loopholes unless somehow the IRS sends me a big check, which I'm sure will not happen. If you set a standard, it is the standard. If a child sits in my classroom and the standard is a ninety-four to a one-hundred to have an A in that class, and they make a ninety-three, I hurt for them, but they don't get the A. You cannot change the standard whenever you have a whim or a wish or a favorite student or, you know, you know the family. And you cannot allow these codes to go into effect because they're not codes, then. They're just suggestions. And so right now, Mr. Ingram went back and forth with, "How many RPDs are there?" Okay, well, I get that. But the problem is, we, for some reason, are determined to bring in more people. And he said, "The spirit to the public is that we listened, we made accommodations. Because of the work of our group, the accommodations were there. The adjustments were there. One-hundred-foot setback." And you're right, they're millionaires. More money than we have, or more money than I have, I should say. But let me ask you this- But let me ask you this. Can they afford to give up a little bit of the land to be respectful of the people that are already there? Yes, they can. These developers did it, and what you need to say to future developers, "We're not giving away our way of life." So every time a code says, "Unless someone else has a different idea," it's no longer a code. It is just a suggestion, and that's not the way the code should read. And as far as that last one, uh, on page 117, the utilities, that was very specific at this last meeting. It had to have water and sewer. And some of the board members, I think you might have even gone home and said, "Well, my area is protected." It's no longer protected with this wording in, in here. And if it has to be only for Smith Mountain Lake, then it needs to be very specific, unless it's Smith, Smith Mountain Lake. And I have seen that in previous documents. I think it's in there in the original code. So you need to be specific, because language is specific, and that's vague. Another thing, and I just want to point this out, and I, and I know that people work really, really hard, and I really do appreciate it, but I want to just point out something. The public hearing was duly advertised in the Chatham Star Tribune, September 6th and September 13th. However, these documents were not available to the public to go online and find until this weekend. So the public doesn't even have a chance to react, or to read, or to be informed. And we do want people to be informed. And so, that's, there is a disconnect between putting something in the newspaper and people actually having access to the documentation that they need to be informed. So I do have a problem with the language. I do have a problem with the lack of specificity, and I wish that you would go back and just put it the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elena Kiskaden.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, board. Elena Kiskaden, I'm in the Tunstall District. Just definitely wanted to kind of reiterate what everybody else has said, that, um, the, at the board discretion needs to come out. We need to have the code as the rule, and if there needs to be an exception, then that needs to happen on a case-by-case basis, for whatever reason, as well as what Jane just said about, if it's specific to Smith Mountain Lake, then that needs to be the case, because that was what was told to us, um, to protect what we value in this county. And that's another thing that I wanted to speak about, is as we've been going through this process, we have really felt like our, I mean, for me, um, that wanting to have a rural life, some people have kind of attacked us and told us that we needed to move, but again, I'm gonna say, I just moved to this county two years ago. When you drive into areas of Pennsylvania County, I've been driving, doing some things, and you come in, and what's on the county sign? Welcome to our agricultural community, has a big old cow on it. So, um, I understand that, yes, we do need to have growth, but we need to also honor the people that are here that do make up our community. I also am incredibly concerned, again, about what this is gonna do to our schools. We need to be working and make sure that we have something in place to get the teachers in and to get buses taken care of for children. My child's not there yet, but he is going to be in school soon, and I moved here so he could have a good education. And adding in a huge populace is gonna change that. So I, I, I want you to consider that. Something else with the RPD code changes, I work in a lab. I don't know if you guys are aware. COVID's coming back up. I don't know about you, but for me, when COVID happened, I got to fully enjoy life because I wasn't living on top of somebody else. You think about all these condos and this and that, and they're gonna squish people in on top of each other. When you get people condensed up, two major things that you get: crime and disease. COVID is back on the rise again. I look at the numbers every month. So you need to consider these things when you're looking at that. I like being able to live in an area where we can provide and take care of ourselves and not live in fear of disease or crime. Guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Is that all, Mr. Z? At 8:12, I closed the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion that we approve the code changes that's presented this evening.
Motion by Mr. Warren. Can I get a second?
Second motion.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Allen.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
I'd like to make one point. Uh, been stated tonight, I think, a couple of times, that elections have consequences, and they certainly do. Uh, but the public tonight is, is a little bit, I think, confused, because there is the capability for the sitting board to buy a future board. So if a future board wanted to come and revamp this entire town in the future, they could do that not correctly?
Yes. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, that's correct.
You're correct, sir.
So what we are trying to do, body, is minimize and make it more difficult for RPDs to get into the jumping over some. It's not gonna be possible for us to arbitrarily make those kind of rulings that doesn't allow any flexibility with future boards. It's just not possible, and I think the public needs to stand that.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any more questions, comments? Go ahead, Mr. Scash.
I'm gonna go ahead and support these changes, because it offers some protection to the residents in my district, which will be the ones that'll pay the price for any future RPDs. It does offer some protections, and again, I, I'll probably persuade them to do the same thing, as far as how the mud group worked it out, if they've gotta complain. If they want concessions, they have to get, let their voices be heard.
That's right.
And hopefully, whoever's representing them will listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scash. Any more comments or questions? If not, we ready to vote. Need to get Mr. Warren, Kelly, Ms. Kazee.
Mr. Warren, your vote?
Yes.
That should be six to one.
Yes, motion passes six to one. Moving to item 11. Do we have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
New business?
No, sir.
Any matters from the work session?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Moving to item 14, our board members' reports. Ms. Eames, we'll start with you tonight.
I just want to thank everyone that attended. We always appreciate the citizens of Pennsylvania County. And like I stated many times, I support the citizens 100%. Um, I'm for economic growth and development if the citizens has major input at the beginning. I have no fault with that. And like I said, uh, the citizens reached out to me, and I have to go with the citizens. It's nothing against any of the board members. You know, you vote for your district. My district does not want the same thing to come in, so I stand with my citizens, and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Eames. Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the folks that showed up tonight. It's very important that, you know, you know what's going on, you'll have your finger on the pulse. Some decisions are not easy, um, but thank you, guys, for coming out this evening. A big congratulations to, uh, to Bert Dotson, as we honored him this evening, and, um, done a wonderful job on the transportation board there in Richmond. And speaking of Dotsons, I've got a good friend, um, that just lost her brother yesterday morning. Her name's Kathy Dotson. I would appreciate the prayers for that family. They live here. Kathy lives here in Virginia, and, um, they're in Georgia, so just a dear friend to me and my wife, and, um, just want to lift them up in prayer this evening. And, uh, want to thank the staff as well for the work that they do. This evening, before the meeting, there were some folks that showed up from my area, in the Renan area, and they was having some issues with River Street putting some projects, uh, starting to put the fiber into the ground, and, um, but their spokesman did not show up tonight. He's a farmer, he was cutting hay, it took him a while, and he wasn't able to show up. But Dave is our guy over this, uh, project, Assistant County Administrator, and I just called Dave up. Dave come over, and I said, "Hey, you know, can we talk to these people, maybe take them into a room, and let's just discuss some things?" And Dave took that this evening, stayed in there for a good while, and, and, big guy, I just want to put props under you tonight. Thank you so much for being concerned, not only for my people, but system-wide too. So I appreciate it. And that's all I've got, Mr. Dalton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Warren, you have any comments, sir?
I'd just like to thank the citizens, and don't be discouraged, your voice does matter.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scash?
I just want to, uh, bring everyone's attention, on October 14th, from 11, excuse me, just want to let you know, on October 14th, there're gonna, uh, there's gonna be a fundraiser for Easton Coffer at River Oak Church, uh, 120 River Oak Drive in Danville, Virginia. Uh, this, this child has brain and spine cancer. I'm not gonna try to tell you what kind, because it's a big word and I'll hurt myself. But, uh, they're gonna have a lunch raffle and auction for this, uh, family. Uh, they have a newborn child, and they've had some astronomical cost entailed with the child's healthcare. He is at St. Jude's now and getting care from there, but the family needs a lot of money for, for their overall cost. So, uh, you can go to his mom's Facebook page, Janice Garner Coffer, or if you can find one of these advertisements, there, there's a QR code. You can get information, donate, or, or get raffle tickets, whatever. There's a lot of good things in the raffle, uh, Myrtle Beach trip, fishing charters, all sorts of good stuff for the raffle, and then they're gonna have an auction as well. So please support this family. I know they've had a, a few functions for, for the family, but, uh, like I said, the cost, uh, just living costs are, are really hurting them bad. So anything anyone can do, I'll post this on my Facebook page as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scash. Ms. Ingram?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Sadly, we lost, uh, two really wonderful people here recently. Rachel Merrick, she was the lunch lady at Tunstall High School for many, many years, and she unfortunately, uh, lost her life to, to cancer. As well as Donald Ricketts, whose funeral was yesterday. Donald was a Tunstall High School graduate, um, very active in Timothy Peters Race Team. But, um, I have to concur with what Mr. Scash says. Cancer's everywhere. I know of nobody that don't know if somebody's been affected by cancer. And I see Ms. Creasy back then, if you remember back in 2016, while I was president of Danville Cancer Association, we changed the name to Danville Pennsylvania Cancer Association, so that we could be inclusive of all people that lived in the Danville, Pennsylvania County area. So I said that to say this. If you know of anybody that lives in our area that has a need by way of cancer, all you have to do is apply. There's, there's no cost, and nobody's turned down, as long as you live in this area. On a brighter note, Peyton Sellers, uh, many of you know Peyton. He won the track championship at Dominion Raceway this past weekend, and heads to Martinsville, hopefully to get another grand final clock at, uh, the Valley Credit Union Star 300. And, uh, I just want to close by saying that I appreciate you guys coming, because this is what government should really be about, is for the people to come and express their support, as well as their opinions and differences. But the way I look at this is that we are very passionate about what we, we believe. We all have a different vision, um, of what the future should look like, and that, that truly is, is the difference here. And, um, I hope that, uh, we can get past this and, and look toward a bright future for everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief. Thank you to the staff, to all of the citizens that came out tonight to speak. Um, I, I just want to also thank my colleagues, um, because, uh, you know, this is a thankless job. And, you know, I heard someone quote, uh, what Sheriff Taylor said at his, uh, event, that you have to be in a position or prepared to feel, answer the tough questions, but you also have to have the courage and the fortitude to, uh, to sit on this dais, to make the difficult decisions. You have to have the vision to see beyond the now and take a look in terms of what this county potentially can be. So, um, I, I share with you that I'm no shrinking violet, and I do not walk away from taking a look at the big picture. And each vote that we take should be prayerfully considered, but yet, at the same time, it is to improve, uh, the, the betterment of the entire county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I would also like to thank everyone for coming out, all the citizens, um, thank the staff, all the hard work they do. And I definitely have the citizens at heart, um, you know, I want to vote the right way and do the right thing to keep them safe and protect them any way I can. Also, I want to thank this board, we're working together, trying to make decisions and, and move forward. And with that, again, thank everyone for coming out, and safe travels on your way home. Mr. Terrell, anything from you, sir?
Just a couple of comments. I do want to also thank Assistant County Administrator for the broadband troubleshooting he does. It's, it's a real life-changing event to get, get the broadband, and it's really important that we drive that project to completion. Secondly, I'm excited about the Citizens Academy, to engage citizens, to get engaged with government and to become a part of it, sit on boards, planning commission, other boards, uh, get engaged with government, recreation committee, the things you want to see happen. We need folks to get involved with government and not just, uh, occasionally. Finally, the, at the work session, and thank you, Ms. Farland, for the excellent presentation. The, uh, the work session included an assessor's report. I do want to highlight, I know everyone's concerned about the increase in property values. The assessor made the point that Henry County values went up 100%. Campbell County went up 96%. And Pennsylvania's 56%, 57%. So this is a post-pandemic trend related to the shortage of housing statewide and nationwide that's driving up these values. I will work with the board to adjust the tax rate, taking into account the needs of the organization and the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Hunt, you have anything, sir?
No, sir. Especially late at night, lawyers should be seen and not heard.